Good evening and welcome to the March 5th meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals. We'll be calling the meeting to order, and I'll also ask everyone to please silence their cell phones at this time. I'll introduce the board. Normally I start on my far right, my far left, but no one's there. My name is TJ Hurry. I'm the chairman of the board. To my left is Ed Van Kuren, who is a full voting member, followed by Bob Dugan, who is the board's clerk, and Mary Berry, who is an associate member. Also with us tonight is Noreen Stockman, who is the zoning administrator, and Ashley DeMello, who is our recording secretary for the night. The Zoning Board of Appeals is charged with applying the zoning bylaws for the town, and we consider requests on special permits, variances, and appeals as provided in the bylaws which have been approved by town meeting and the Attorney General's office for the Commonwealth. All decisions that the board makes are made through the public hearing process. The board's goal is to hear testimony from the applicants and also from the public, and to allow a full and fair discussion of the project prior to rendering a decision. To be in each hearing, the clerk will read the public announcement of the hearing, and then present any pertinent information from the files, such as referrals from town departments and summarizing correspondences from the board. The applicant or the applicant's representative will then have 15 minutes to make a presentation, and time may be extended by vote of the board. The board will then question the applicant, and the public will be invited to comment as well. We ask that public comments should be directed only at the project, and we also ask that you please refrain from making any personal or derogatory statements. Public comment can include an opinion in favor or in opposition, or it might just simply be a question about the nature of the project. The chair will limit discussion in the interest of time in the event that comments become repetitive. All members of the public wishing to speak should wait to be recognized by the chair. Come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. We typically limit public comments to two minutes per person. The board will then either close or continue the hearing. When the board is satisfied that enough information has been presented by testimony and in the file to make a decision, by motion and vote of the board, the hearing would be closed. And the alternative, the board may continue the hearing to a future date and time. After the hearing is closed, no more testimony may be taken. And as for board discussion and decision, the board may then further discuss the project among ourselves and make a motion to deny or approve what be made and voted upon. The motion will include a summary of key findings and conditions. An affirmative vote of four members, which is a supermajority, is required for approvals of motions on special permits, variances, and appeals. A split vote, such as a three to two vote, would be a failure to carry and would result in denial of the project. Under Massachusetts general law, if a special permit is denied, the applicant cannot return to the board for two years unless the project is substantially different. So turning to our agenda tonight, we have public comment, we have several continuations, three new hearings, and we also have items on our open meeting agenda. So to start, we have public comment. This public comment period is for anything that is not on the agenda tonight. So is there anyone out there who has anything to say, anything not having to do with anything on the agenda tonight? Okay, seeing none. There's an open meeting agenda that I'd like to take out of order if anyone would like to make that motion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to take item number two in the open meeting out of order with the chair to appoint interim a full voting member.
Okay, so the motion was made by Bob. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so reviewing Massachusetts general law and town policies and procedures, I found out that the chairman can appoint a member to the full voting position that's currently vacated. I know we've dealt with vacancies in the past, but I was never aware of this. So with that having been said, I'd like to appoint Mary to the vacated position. It's on an interim basis until the selectmen can fill the seat, and I know it's well deserved. Thank you, Mary. And it's also a little selfish on my part, so I don't have to appoint anyone continuously throughout the night. So thank you, Mary, for that. Moving on to our continuations, we have application 63-19 and, together with application 87-19, Kachadorian, Ballas, 18 Tajmoo Drive in East Falmouth.
So, Mr. Chairman, we have a previously requested continuation. I read you the letter from counsel. It says that this is a request to continue the hearing on above referenced enforcement action from Thursday, March 5th, 2020 to Thursday, April 2nd, 2020. This request is being made by agreement of the interested parties, namely my clients, the petitioners, Mr. Ballas and Mr. Kachadorian, and Attorney Hoyt's clients, Mr. and Mrs. Dundulus, owners of the property subject to the enforcement request. The reason for the request is that the parties have been discussing the matter and have reached an agreement in principle to resolve their dispute, but time is needed to work out the details and draft a document memorializing the agreement. I respectfully suggest that it is in the interest of all parties that the request be granted and that the matter be continued to April 2nd, 2020. I would be pleased to sign an extension waiver for timeframes, and he has sent over an endorsed waiver for timeframes.
Okay. Would anyone like to make that motion?
So I'll make a motion to accept the request of a continuation to April 2nd, 2020.
Second.
Motion is seconded by Ed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Continue to April 2nd. Up next, we have application 78-19, Buzzards Bay Development LLC, 40 Shore Street in Falmouth.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. I did send a request over to the zoning administrator late this afternoon requesting a continuance. The applicant is considering some alternatives that have arisen recently and looking at some options, so we would like to request a continuance. In speaking with the zoning administrator earlier, it wasn't clear what potential dates we'd be looking at in order to move forward, so I did not request a date specific, but would be happy to discuss that.
Okay, and I'll just defer to Noreen in terms of any... I know the schedule's pretty full that I'm looking at. Is there anything that you're seeing?
I think we had looked at March 19. I think there was hopefully a page on top of the file for that.
Is there a second file? This is the old file, right?
Hopefully, there was a continuation form on top of the file. No?
Oh, no, in this one.
It's gone the way of the Connoisseur.
It's my understanding that Mr. Foreman won't be back on the 19th. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Given the four-member board would render a unanimous vote necessary, I'd prefer to wait until there's five members, if possible, just given the complex nature of the permit.
If March 19th might be out, we would be looking at...I'm not sure.
You have a pretty full agenda for April 2. The other possibility would be if you are changing meeting nights to April 9, that would be a possibility as well.
Do we have any issues on the timeline at all, just because this is a 40B or no?
Oh, which one of you...I'm sorry.
This is Buzzards Bay.
This would be Buzzards Bay, Shore Street.
Okay, I'm sorry. I was looking at Mullen. Okay, so Ken is due to be absent for your next board meeting.
For the 19th?
April 2nd is a pretty full agenda, but we're considering adding a meeting on the 9th of April, if that works for the board's schedule.
I'd say go for that.
I'm available the 9th. Attorney Clower, are you available for the 9th?
I make myself available.
Okay. Would anyone like to make that motion?
No, just the thing, I just want to note that the main reason for the extension though is because they are trying to do some kind of changes in the project.
Right.
So was it the 19th?
It would be April 9.
Okay, so then I would make a motion to continue to April 9.
Second.
Okay, motion was made by Bob and seconded by Ed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
We'll get you all down to sign with a sent you a form to sign tomorrow.
Sure, I can have it.
And up next, we have the continuation, application 72-19, Mullen, 410 Surf Drive in Falmouth.
Good evening, Mr. Chair.
And if I jumped over that to confuse people, my apologies.
That's okay. Good evening, Mr. Chair, again Kevin Clower, representing the applicant. Similarly, we had reached out to Ms. Stockman yesterday requesting a continuance on this matter as well.
And did you have any date in mind?
It sounds like if there's availability on April 9, that would probably be the best.
And the purpose of this continuance?
Again, the applicant is sort of weighing the options here and looking at various alternatives, and unfortunately, just the nature of this particular project is that it really has a trickle-down effect, and changes for zoning require changes for conservation, render changes for border health, so it's not as simple as making a tweak on a plan, given the sensitive nature of the site.
All right, so the applicant is requesting continuance to April 9. Would anyone like to make that motion?
Make a motion to...then to April 9.
Okay, motion was made by Ed. Is there a second?
I'll second. I just want to make note again that it's for...because he's doing changes with the plan.
All right. Okay, so the motion to continue was made by Ed and seconded by Bob. All those in favor?
Aye.
We have a form for them to sign, and just correct the date on that. I don't think we had selected the April 9 date at that point in time, so if you just correct it to April 9.
Just initial that to change.
Up next, we're moving into our new hearings. We have application 1-20, Chevalier, 426 Monot Road in East Falmouth. And prior to opening the hearing, I'm going to advise the applicant or the applicant's representative, they have three options tonight. One would be to proceed with the hearing tonight, with the caveat that proceeding with the hearing tonight would require a unanimous decision from the board, being all four members. Two, you could ask for a continuance, if you'd be more comfortable with that, or three, you could withdraw without prejudice and reapply to the board.
Good evening. My name is Ken Bryvogel.
If you could come to the podium with the microphone, please. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ken Bryvogel. I'm with the firm Jack Lanis-Collie, and we're representing the applicant, Mr. Charles Chevalier. I request five or 10 minutes to talk to my client about the choices that you just laid out to us. Thank you.
Sure. All right, I guess we can...
Or we wait until see.
Yeah, we can wait and see.
May I ask you, my hearing is the next one. If the board was willing to table this hearing for five minutes, I would be requesting a hearing on the next, a continuance on the next hearing. I'm happy to wait, but I just thought it would make better use of your time, if you like, wish.
I'm sure if we'd like to table that.
Table the current one.
Table the current one and move on to the next.
So we will table Chevalier 001-20.
All right. Motion was made by Bob. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Ed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so up next, we have application 4-20, Garfield Trustee, 85 Fay Road, Woods Hole. And Attorney Moynihan, just for the record, I'll say the same thing that I just told the previous applicant. There are three options for you to consider tonight. Either you proceed tonight, knowing that proceeding, you'll need all four of us to vote unanimously to approve the project, either ask for a continuance or withdraw and reapply without prejudice. So with that having been said, what's your pleasure?
Thank you. The applicant would like to request a continuance, and I believe I discussed with Noreen April 2nd, if that is still available.
It's another busy night, but I think it's available.
So my only question is, because I think we're seeing a theme.
Right.
And I understand what the problems are, but are they doing anything else with the plan, or is it just because of the member contingent?
It's just, it's because of the lack of five members, correct?
So, Mr. Chair, the only issue that I have, and it's nothing specific with projects, but because of the situation that we've been getting into now with our scheduling, the other developments that are coming up, every time we continue one of these to another date, we're bottlenecking those nights and going out to another one.
Right.
And I don't have any problem with doing them when they have to do issues with plans or there's a reason for it, but I don't think we have the luxury anymore to automatically just do courtesy continuance. I know the board would have to vote anyways, but I just have a problem doing continuances based on the...I understand it from the applicant's point of view. I just, I know what we're getting into scheduling-wise, and I think it's going to be a big problem.
I understand that completely.
Well, I think if the board going forward certainly invokes that as a policy, then that's fine if people have notice of it, but here, we didn't, quite frankly, and I don't have the architect here and my client isn't here, because we were offered that option today and decided to take it and confirmed it in writing. But certainly, I understand that is an issue, but I guess I would ask for, in this particular case, because of the circumstances that you do grant the continuance, and certainly myself knowing going forward that this may be an issue.
So you're representing to us, having discussed with the staff that you're unable to proceed tonight if we were to open the meeting?
Well, I'm not...
Understanding that.
Yeah, I'm not prepared to proceed because I was under the impression that I could request the continuance and that we had another date in mind, so I told the architect and the applicant not to come, so.
Right.
Certainly, as I said, I do understand the predicament that you're in, and going forward would be much more cognizant of that.
Thank you, Attorney Moynihan.
All right, so in that case, where the applicant, the architect, and the other people haven't been able to be here this evening because of what you previously thought would be a continuance, then I would make a motion to continue to...what's the next date?
I think we have a schedule that should be hopefully on September 2nd.
April 2nd penciled in?
Oh, I have it right here.
That's good. I thought it was...
April 2.
So then that would be to continue to April 2nd, 2020.
Okay, so the motion was made by Bob. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Ed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate the courtesy. Thank you.
Laura, if you could just sign this.
All right, we'll take up application 1-20, Chevalier, 426 Monot Road.
Good evening. Ken Bryvogel for the applicant. We're going to request a continuance, the next available date.
And I guess I'd ask the same question, Mr. Bryvogel. Is the continuance have anything to do with the plan itself, or is it just on the contingent of the board members?
I'm sorry, couldn't hear.
Is the continuance based on anything with the plan or something to do, or is it just on the contingent of the board?
Both. I think we'd like to have all the board members, and we just received a comment today from an abutter that did have some objections, okay? And we want to have a chance to submit a...he'd like to see some plannings for...that was one of his objections. We'd like to submit a plan to show some plannings.
So then I would make a motion to continue based on plan revisions?
Seconded.
Do we have a...I'm sorry, do we have a date?
I think we'd be looking at April 9.
Sounds good.
All right, so continue to April 9. Do we need a...actually, we haven't opened it.
No, so, yeah, I would have to check on the dates, but if we need to continue, we can just send along.
We can just continue without it. Okay. And just make note, we haven't opened the file.
Yep.
So that'll be continued to April 9.
Okay. Do we need to sign a consent?
We can prepare one for you. We didn't prepare one in advance for that case, but we can send along.
So the motion to continue was made by Bob, seconded by Ed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, up next, we have application 3-20, Falmouth Housing Trust, Inc., lots 9 and 10 Pam's Way in East Falmouth. And once again, before we open, just saying the same thing again, you can either proceed tonight with a unanimous vote, ask for a continuance, or withdraw and reapply without prejudice. Attorney Alman.
Thank you, Mr. Hurry. I'm Bob Alman. I'm a Falmouth attorney. I represent the Falmouth Housing Trust, and thank you for stating those options. The Housing Trust asks for a continuance until your next available date, other than April 2nd. I guess that would be April 9. The reason for the request is that there are not plans in this case. The unique nature of the application involves the proposed modification of a special permit issued by the planning board for what is now a non-conforming use. The interesting legal issues involved should be reviewed by the full board. I understand the concerns raised by the situation that all applicants are facing tonight of having only four members of the board. The solution, of course, and hopefully can be accomplished soon, would be the appointment by the selectmen of additional board members, so that there are associates able to fill in, and I'm sure that the board is making that need known to the selectmen. Hopefully, there are some good applicants for the position. We did receive notice of the quorum issue earlier today. We informed the staff that we would like a continuance. As a result of being advised that we'd be able to get a continuance, as has been offered by the chairman, we notified the members of the board of the Falmouth Housing Trust of a continuance, so neither the staff nor the board are present. In addition, I, as a courtesy, attempted to contact two neighbors of the subdivision who had written letters in opposition. I wanted them to know that they could avoid coming down here tonight if they were planning one. Was Scott Thrasher whom I talked to, and I emailed a note to the other abutter who had sent a letter of opposition. So we would like to ask for a continuance to April 9, unless March 19 is available, but my understanding is your agenda's pretty crowded for that night.
March 19th is a very full night for us.
So just to note, Chairman, it's...just because it was mentioned it's a quorum issue, we actually have the quorum. We just don't have a fifth member.
Right.
Which gives extra options on a vote. So I would have, in all honesty, because we're getting this so much, would have not been in favor of a continuance, but now that I know that the applicant has contacted the abutter that had negative comments that wanted him read into the record, and he's not here for that reason, that's really the only reason I'd be in favor of continuance. Somebody was contacted, not by the board, told not to come tonight, before the board has accepted the continuance.
Okay, that's fair. So we would be looking at not March 19th?
Night.
The 9th?
I think for the record, we should not be having applicants advise.
I don't, I don't...I've never had a situation where an applicant has called somebody else and told them not to come to a hearing.
Right.
I don't think that's appropriate.
That being said, what's the date we have?
I would propose April 9, and I think we can remail to the abutters and advise them of the correct date.
So then I would make the continuance to April 9, and I would also ask the administrator to also get in touch with that same party, just to let him know that he should be double-checking with the board.
All right, so motion to continue with that to...I'm sorry, April 9?
Yes.
Made by Bob, seconded by Ed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Hurry, can I make one more comment?
We did continue it, so...okay, all right. Moving on to our open meeting items. Thank you. Okay, so we have voting the minutes for February 6th and February 13th. We'll take them one at a time, as everyone had the chance to review the minutes for February 6th.
Yes.
Okay. Anything modifications?
Give them to Noreen.
All right.
So motion to accept minutes from February 6th?
Motion was made by Bob and seconded by Ed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Minutes from February 13th. Everyone had a chance to review those.
Yes.
Okay. Any motions to be made?
Motion to accept the minutes of February 13th, 2020.
Seconded.
Motion was made by Bob and seconded by Ed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We took number two out of order. Moving on to 117-15 MPG Corporation, 435 Palmer Ave. in Falmouth, a request for a board administrative approval to allow minor changes to previously approved plans with a vote anticipated.
Good evening, I'm Bob Amen, Tejno, and I represent MPG Corporation, which is the tenant of the property just north of Hospital Lights intersection on Palmer Ave., it's 435 Palmer Ave. In 2015, they obtained a special permit allowing the raising of the building, recently removed within the last two weeks, that housed automobile repair shop and a convenience store, and also served the gasoline pumping station, which is between the former building and the street. So the board approved back then a new building. The decision in 2015 referred to the existing canopy that's in the front of the property, and allowed it to remain as-is, as well as the gas pumps. There were a lot of improvements associated with the site, construction of which are now underway. The decision was appealed to the Superior Court, the judgment was issued in favor of the board and the owner of the property, or the applicant, and so now the project is underway. The request before you is to get your permission simply to make some changes to the design of the building, changes that do not affect the site plan in any way, do not change the dimensions of the building horizontally, but reduce the height of the building and we think is a more attractive design. So, that more attractive design is in front of you, on another slide, I'll show you the approved plan, but what I want to point out is that the height of the building as proposed will be 24 feet 3 inches, which is about three feet lower than the approved building. There's also a cupola shown on the approved building, which is omitted, which would increase the height, at least as far as the cupola portion is concerned. At the same time that the height of the building is reduced, the height of the wall is increased, so instead of having a, the top of the wall being around 12 feet, it's now around 13 feet, so there's more wall, much less roof, and it would be more attractive, and also, that change means that the ceiling height inside the convenience store will be higher, it'll be just a more pleasant, pleasant space. So, this plan also shows these awnings, which are the green, here and here and here, and some attractive lighting on the front. You can see the awnings depicted over here, on that view of the, what's actually, the south elevation, and you can see they're pretty minimal, those awnings. So that's the building that's proposed, and now I'm going to show you, if I can do this right, the, what you've already approved. That is not it, let's see if I don't have it. I might not have it here, and I have copies I can show you, I apologize that I didn't get on to this, if that's right. And of course, I submitted copies of what was approved previously. These are the approved plans. Those are the same two elevations, it's a considerably taller building, it's a lot more roof, one of the things I like about this lower roof. Is that as you approach the facility from the south, that is heading north past the Hospital Lights, you'll look right over this building and see the trees that are part of the Oak Grove Cemetery behind it, you'll see more of that with the lower profile of the building. So, we're not asking for any changes, except what we think is, for good reason, an improved design of the building. Are there any questions, I'm happy to ask.
Any questions from the board?
No, they seem to be lessening everything. Is there a canopy or anything with this, or just any kind of a canopy or anything, or just?
Are you referring to a canopy over the gas pumps?
Yeah, like on the gas pumps.
Yes, there is an existing canopy over the gas pumps, and as I mentioned, the decision of the board specifically recognized that and said it would remain, and if you drive by the site now, you'll see that the building on the site has been demolished in preparation for the new construction, and the canopy remains. Now, I did submit a letter to the board yesterday, within your 48-hour period prior to the hearing, asking for the board to also administratively approve being allowed to reconstruct the canopy in the exact same location, with the exact same design, resulting in the exact same appearance. The intention had been to simply renovate and repair the canopy, I actually took a photo of it today, and it's not in great shape, but it can be improved, it's 30 years old, and the contractor has advised the owner that the cost of repairs, which the building commissioner doesn't need anything from the board to do, is $30,000, and the cost of building it new, using just the existing footings, would be $32,000. So we have an old canopy, we'd actually like to take it down and replace it, the end result will be absolutely the same as what the board already approved, the canopy, of course, was shown on the approved site plan. So, that seems to me to be a totally minor change to the special permit approval, and so I was going to ask if you could include that, if you feel that we need to wait until that request has been posted, and fine, but I think the board for administrative approvals can authorize the administrator to do that type of thing, so however you think it's right to do it, so there really are, therefore, two requests.
So with regard to the proposed change in the height of the primary building, was that the result of the court case, or abutter input, or is the abutter, I'm sorry, is the applicant just doing that, doing that themselves?
The court decision was really quite interesting, despite the fact that the plaintiff is an immediate abutter, the court found that there was no standing, and the court did so after some rather significant fact finding, in which the court considered the questions of whether the abutters' claims as to impact on parking and impact on traffic rose to the level, to grant standing, and there was actually traffic reports considered by the court just on the standing issue, submitted by both parties, and the court concluded that the plaintiff, abutter, had been unable to show that on either the parking or traffic issues, they would suffer any credible harm, so they could not, the neighbor, the abutter failed to overcome the challenge to standing, the court therefore dismissed the complaint, and that decision was not appealed from. So there was no discussion about the building, the only issues raised by the abutter, therefore the only issues concerned by the, that were reviewed by the court, had to do with parking and traffic, neither of which are, of course, affected by this reduction in the building height.
So just to put it another way, the stand, issue of standing aside, the applicants just proposing the changes themselves?
Yes, and they told me it has nothing to do with, it's not going to reduce the cost of the building, it's not, they think that this is a more appealing design, and comparing the two, I have to agree.
Okay, any other questions from the board?
We don't have any.
All right, anyone like to make a motion?
So I would make a motion to approve the administrative changes as discussed.
Seconded.
Okay, motion was made by Bob and seconded by Ed, all those in favor?
Aye.
And aye.
Mr. Hurry, are you going to separately consider tonight the issue of reconstructing the canopy in its same location, same design, and same appearance?
So I.
So I just have a question, Noreen.
I admittedly was confused about.
Do, even though it's being replaced as-is, do we need any kind of a plan in advance showing that, or no?
I have not looked to see if you have a site plan with the dimensions showing the setbacks for the canopy and the height of the canopy.
Sure, that site plan is part of the package approved by the. Shows the canopy.
See.
So it's got the height and the dimensions?
Well, I don't think that the height is shown, and we could certainly provide.
Because I think that would be part of the understanding, is that it wouldn't be an exact replacement if you.
I think that's a totally reasonable requirement that we submit, I would guess it should be a plan, and in fact, I'm sure there'll need to be a plan for the new construction at the building department, so a plan that would confirm the, that the new structure will match the dimensions of the existing structure.
I think so long as that's what you're representing to us.
So can we make a motion to let the administrator do the approval on the canopy?
Yeah, why not?
That way, we'll know everything's received that we needed, so then I'd make a motion for the administrator to approve the canopy as discussed tonight.
Okay, so motion was made by Bob and seconded by Ed, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Lon.
Thank you. All right, up next, we have board discussion, is there any board discussion?
Yeah, so I have board discussion.
All right.
I think it really needs to be made clear, I know what we've been into tonight, four members is not a quorum issue, as far as I know, it's not a legal issue, it does give an applicant an extra option if there's a member that's against the plan, but we are changing all of our schedules, and our hearing schedules, and our time, based on situations when applicants are only requesting the continuance because of the member contingent, they're not, they're not, in many cases, doing it on a plan change, it's just four versus five members. Now, if you had a lot of members, you have the luxury, we no longer have that luxury to do, so I know it was be given as a courtesy in the past, I don't think we can afford to keep doing the courtesy, so maybe at application now, or whoever's in front of us for our next few meetings, they need to understand that if it's a four-member board, they can ask for a continuance, but they take the chance that the board may not carry the continuance.
Right, because it is at our discretion.
As many times that we've received files that are fine, and we may decide to continue after discussion of the file and the presentations, we may need more information. I am very taken aback that this evening, we had an applicant that said he contacted, told a member not to come to this hearing tonight, because this was being continued, so that applicant never contacted the board, and the reason I think it's an issue here is that in review of the file, the person mentioned specifically wanted a letter read into the file, and he had concerns on the project, that should not happen, you should never have applicants contacting other people that have nothing to do with their application and telling them not to come to the board, because the board is already deciding something that they have no idea that they're deciding.
And I was troubled with that as well, and just to note, for those who don't know, four does make minimum quorum, we're here, it's Thursday night as usual, we can continue with hearings, we can open them and make decisions if we want, anything less than that, a meeting would have to be canceled, and hearings would have to be rescheduled, so.
I'd like to just point out that there were people who came tonight to be heard from the public, I would assume, who left because they came all the way out here and weren't able to.
That was disappointing to see, and I saw them leave once we made the decision to continue a hearing, it's unfortunate. Oh, Mr. Bot?
May I?
You may.
Thank you, Mr. Chairmembers, I didn't intend to talk, but hearing the frustration about the quorum for the board, has the ZBA had a discussion about the Mullen Rule, where an applicant, where a member of the board.
We actually use it.
Can miss one hearing, I know it's dicier for an applicant at the beginning of a hearing, but that allows someone to miss, a member to miss one meeting of an application, and still vote on it if they are able to certify by reviewing the record that they were here for that, now I realize, in Ken's case, he's not going to be here for a couple meetings, but.
So we do that already, and we have it a lot of past hearings, but we're hitting other situations with illnesses, recusals.
I'm with you, I just thought, I was here, and I'd just throw it out there, but I suspected you would, but I thought, well, I'm here too, let me do what I can do, anyhow, that was just my one comment.
Thank you for that, and I'm not sure if I was misinterpreting the Mullen Rule, but I think that only applies once the hearing's open, it doesn't apply to the first meeting missed, you'd have to already, it had already been.
I don't, I don't think that's the case, I think they could miss the first meeting, and if the case were continued, then they could review the record for the first meeting.
Okay, I thought it was a subsequent meeting.
I think, correct, but I think maybe applicants were just not willing to proceed that way.
But we also want to make sure that when that happens, it's the member, it's saying they want to do the Mullen Rule, that's usually what happens, it usually doesn't come from the public.
Right, that would create its own issue, right.
Because we have also kind of been hinted the fact, in some cases, that applicants that applicants may want to continue based on people they think may not be here on a certain date. And I just don't want to get that thrown into it anymore than... I think the Mullen Rule's great. It's helped us in the past. It's great to be able to review. I think reviewing the hearings are easier anyways. You get to see everything that happened during the hearing.
Another discussion or board update, I suppose. And I can thank Mr. Bott in person for sending out an email about the zoning recodification group upcoming meeting. Thank you.
It is very exciting.
It sure is. Well, it's our specialty, not conforming using structures and lots, am I right?
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, thank you. And the reason why I brought up that, it's a volunteer group, and Mary has volunteered to be with Bob and discuss those issues coming up on April 1st. So thank you for volunteering.
And there's one more chance for changes, and you're the person. The packet is ready.
So thank you for that, Mary. Any other discussion or update?
No, I guess I would just be looking for an update. What is the status right now of the selectmen making a current appointment and then advertising for next vacancy? I mean, I, does the, how is the process go forward at this point? Originally, I thought they would be automatically, you've done the interim thing, the interim tonight to appoint Mary. When I was looking over the bylaws, it seemed that that was something that should have already happened within the first thirty days of the associate member, which didn't happen. So my question is, what is the status now with the town? Has, is it on an agenda? And then if they appoint the associate, are they all ready to start advertising for the next opening?
I don't know. The information was forwarded to the board of selectmen. It was my understanding that it was going to be on their agenda.
Because it would be nice. I mean, we've got situations now just with illnesses and travel schedules, and I'm sure this is going to happen again soon. And the people that were here tonight are on notice. It's four members, it's four members. But if the selectmen can move forward and appoint an associate now, that way they could advertise right away for the vacant position.
Would that be something that you would want to put in your rules as far as if there is a four-member board? So that people are in advance on your...
I think we can. I went through the rules and procedures, and the rules and procedures very clearly base everything on four. They don't even mention five. So four is it. I mean, it's nice to have the fifth person there anyways, but all our procedures are based on four. At one point, this board worked off of three. And the applicants came in and that's it. Unless it was a change in a plan, it's...
It's certainly going to be a problem for the future if you have a situation again where there's a four-member board and people just all...
I mean, maybe we should put in the, I mean, can we put in the procedures that a four, I mean, it already says it's the quorum and contingent required in that we won't be accepting continuances based on, based on having four versus five members.
Can we do that legally?
It's, I don't, you know, you could check, but as far as I know, it's four is what everything is based on for the actual vote. There is no, five was just kind of, they expanded the size of the board, but they didn't make the fifth a requirement.
I just, I think in the past, you know, by custom, I think the board has been extremely generous granting continuances. But in the past, we haven't been dealing with these schedule issues. I mean, these schedules are now massive. They're full.
It's just something we can't do. So maybe we should, maybe we should update the procedures to basically say it's four. You know, if you're doing a basis contingent, you can't make a, you can always ask, but maybe it should be in there that just be aware that if you ask for a continuance, it's the board that decides if the continuance is granted or not, and they chance the fact of getting it turned down.
I'd certainly like something explicit like that. I mean, I know tonight we were kind of operating off of custom and just advising them of the three options.
You know, Mary said the audience was full of people, and they have no idea what went on tonight. They just, one by one, looked around and got on.
And the other part of the circumstance is that for the first hearing, notices specifically mailed to people. But when you continue a hearing, there's no subsequent mailing. It's only based on what's announced, and that's what's provided by law. But that sort of excludes people unless they're able to subscribe to the agenda for the zoning board online, in which case they will automatically get an email that will tell them what our upcoming agendas are. But other than that, they're not noticed when your next hearing is. So I think it's not...
I mean, you have to have a compelling reason for continuance. And every file that we have has people that are for a project, against a project, that have concerns. And I've never based a continuance because there's letters that have been submitted to a file, because you don't know the story until it's open. But to have somebody just, I just, I don't understand why somebody would call someone and tell them just not to show up.
Regarding the vacancy.
Mm-hmm.
Based on what we were provided with, is there a thirty-day requirement that the selectmen...
So I did a little bit of my own research. And it looks like Mass. General Law, well, to put it another way, it looks as if that the town's policies and procedures regarding vacancy may or may not be in conflict with Mass. General Law. In Mass. General Law, there is a provision that allows, that we've been hinting at, notification to the selectmen of the vacancy. And then the law says that it would have to be filled within thirty days. Reasonably interpreting the law, it seems as if it provides an associate member to be nominated as a full member through the selectmen as the authority for that.
And they could do that at the next meeting.
I believe they could, but it's...
If they did, then they could advertise immediately the vacancy of the associate.
Of the associate position, correct, correct.
Which pushes the next thirty days. I just, I know we've had regular vacancies. There's been a lot of confusion. Or stuff hasn't gotten advertised in time, or there's been weeks that have been waited. Because even if we get, and the importance of that, I think the thirty day, and the reason it's in there is because they realize that if you're a permit-granting authority and you have the opportunity where it's in a, you know, a different circumstance, somebody is gone. They want to make sure that there is a member immediately appointed so that it doesn't affect applications.
Right, and...
I just don't know why, and you don't either, I just don't know why that hasn't occurred. Because when the advertisement goes out for the next position and they pick someone for the next position, when that person comes on the board, they can only be on applications from that point out. So everything we're dealing with in the past, you still have to deal with.
And Mr. Chairman, what about, what does Mass. Law say about the number of associate members that you can have on a ZBA?
I would have to check that myself, but just going off of memory, I think we're, it's discretionary. I think it's completely discretionary, so. So we have two. We could always opt, or I don't think we could do it ourselves. I think it would be the selectmen or through the town charter would be the appropriate venue for doing that. But if we were thinking about expanding the board, we could certainly relay our concerns to the selectmen and see how that might go. I know that years ago, Matt McNamara, who was the former chair, he was instrumental in making the board go from three to five permanent members with the addition of the associates, so.
I think the charter might say two specifically.
Uh-huh, so it would be the charter.
I think it does, and I think the, the expansion, I think they mentioned that too. I think the other thing is they were concerned with not having so many, you know, everybody chimes in on the project. And the more that you expand, you know, it's tough enough at seven.
Yeah, sometimes it's...
Picture ten.
I think the number seven is...
I think the number seven has worked out fine. I just said that the town needs to appoint now, if they can, the full voting position. So they can start advertising right away.
Their next meeting is Monday, I think, isn't it?
I will point out that through my research, this was just a quick Google search, though I actually did research Mass. General Law and policies and procedures. But the town of Amherst, among others in Massachusetts, adhere to Mass. General Law, appointing someone within those thirty days. It's within their own policies and procedures, it's pretty explicit that they fill that position quickly and then advertise.
So maybe you can touch base with town management before the selectmen's meeting.
Sure.
Like tomorrow.
Certainly can. You need so much time to post the agenda, right?
I think they seem to, well, they get it in the paper. It'll be in the paper tomorrow. My guess is it's already printed.
Hmm, all right.
May it be a done deal. Check it in the paper in the morning.
Right. Anything else for discussion or updates? Looks like we're out of here in record time tonight. Any future agenda items?
I think we got enough.
There is an executive session next Tuesday, March 10th, 6:30, at the CPC conference room. But our next scheduled public hearing here at Town Hall, March 19th, 6:30. Meeting adjourned.